Good evening, I would like to call our city council meeting for February 13th, 2019 to order. You know, as we go through a lot of interesting times in our community with kids with the snow days and trying to work how our school system can be the best it can possibly be, the snow and the challenges it's faced many members of our community, let's keep in mind that as a community and we all come together, we can find solutions. We can find how we can help each individual out and make sure everybody has a fair opportunity to be part of our wonderful city. With that, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Dunn, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. At this time, Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Kuhl.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you a good evening and as begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. And when addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity and good taste, which we have led these meetings with for literally generations. With that, I'm excited to go forward with the rest of our meeting. Will an Alderman move approval of the city council meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2019?
(inaudible).
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. Our next item, will an Alderman approve the report of the committee of the whole for February 6th, 2019?
(inaudible).
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. There are no appointments and proclamations this evening. There is one presentation for this evening and we're going to have an update from our Sister City program and I think Rachel Steiner and some others. I think Lynn Cochran is one and others are coming up, Steve Arons and a whole bunch of people. And you can introduce the group as you move forward.
(laughing) Thank you for having us. My name's Rachel Steiner and I'm with Davenport Community Schools. I got involved with Sister Cities about three years ago and I currently serve as president. I have with me tonight Molly Otting Carlsen and she's the director, VP of Visitor Services, Destination Marketing at Quad Cities Convention and Visitor Bureau. Lynn Cochran, who's president of Scott Community College. Sarah Mullins and she serves as our Chris Kennelmark Chair and worked with our active seniors to get them to Carlo this year. And of course, you know Steve Arons, who's the head of our Riverfront Improvement Commission. So we wanted to come back to you today. I did kind of check our records on our participation with you and we'd not been with you since September of 2017. So we thought it was time to come back and do a quick update for you. Just a reminder of our function with the city, we serve as your representatives and facilitators in several international relationships that are designated as Sister Cities and then we work with you on identifying new communities and friendship opportunities, international affairs across the world. So our mission is to promote exposure, awareness and exchange between citizens of Davenport and these communities, but we also serve as a local chapter to Sister Cities International. And that group actually represents tens of thousands of these citizen diplomats around the world, over 2,000 partnerships, 145 countries on six continents. Locally, those relationships are with these five communities, Sister Cities relationships with Kaiser Slaughter in Elias and Carlo County and then developing friendship relationships with Cologne, Mexico and Longfong, China. So the last time we were here, we were working on separating and establishing formal 501(c)(3), working on board structure. We were conceptualizing a homestay network that might provide opportunities for a deeper experience for our visitors and kind of reconnecting with our international partners. We were happy to brag on about 10 partnerships at that time, a little over 18 months ago, and conceptualizing some distant projects around this idea of a Chris Kennelmark and how might we celebrate our upcoming anniversary with Kaiser Slaughter and reinvigorate the knowledge locally about that historic relationship. We've come a very long way, so we're going to run through a lot of updates on what's happened to date and then preview some things coming up for you as well. To start with, we kind of kicked off the year right after we met with you with the groundbreaking dedication of the Bug Hotel, which was a project with East Bluff Neighborhood Association in partnership with the Beautiful Gardens of Carlo County. We participated in an international art exhibit in Kaiser Slaughter in Germany with Davenport artists, Quad City artists, participating there is George Eaton, that's his proof of life that he made it over there. He's our representative from the Rock Island Arsenal, who travels to Kaiser Slaughter regularly. At the Gavertz minor, the Gavertz Works Gemeinschaft, which is their arts cooperative in Kaiser Slaughter. We partnered with Davenport Parks and Rec on cultural workshops over the holiday season when kids are out of school for the Christmas holiday and also spring break week. We hosted the Carlo delegation. Many of you were able to participate in that visit, including being hosted by St. Patrick's Society in the grand parade. So there's our delegation there. We were pleased to be able to use that as an opportunity to kind of format what these delegation visits look like, to make sure that we're being opportunistic and connecting them with city services for potential partnership, but that we're also really promoting the Quad Cities as a destination. You can see we hit the Putnam, the Figgy, lots of different amenities and I think it's partly the role of the Quad Cities Convention Visitor Bureau is to kind of work with us on how do we leverage these relationships to actually result in some international visiting as well, tourism. And of course, the fire department and other city facilities. We used that visit also as an opportunity to launch the homestay network. And I have to compliment our fifth ward alderman Rita Rossen, she's kind of been the brainstorm, the leader behind the homestay network and connecting this with community. But we did use that Carlo visit to launch the first official homestay and we're up to five or six homestays, I think, at this point, available to our community. So when they come, they participate, they live in the home with the family, get to meet the children, pet the dog, but also get to enjoy some of the social life in our community. So there's our Michael Kelly at Lago Machinos. I also have some great video on our Facebook page of Eileen Brophy experiencing the giant cinnamon rolls at Iowa Machine Shed. So (laughing) a lot of this is just familiarizing them with the lifestyle here in the Quad Cities as well. We've been working on that Longfong, China relationship as well, which I think you're very familiar with, with travel there. Alderman Mike Mattson, along with representatives from Davenport Schools and Davenport Sister Cities, traveled to Longfong and had a wonderful experience there with them and that's been a relationship that's continuing to blossom. We launched the International Business Academy, a partnership with Davenport Community Schools and the St. Ambrose University International Business Community. That's continuing to grow. This past year, they explored case studies in Germany, Ireland and China as part of learning about international business, financial systems, customs and norms, that kind of thing. So all high school students from across Davenport. And of course, our youth exchange to Kaiser Slaughter in Germany. We had 12 of our students from Davenport West High's Robotics, I should say World Champion Robotics Team, make it to Kaiser Slaughter and participate in three weeks of robotics competitions and STEM experiences in Kaiser Slaughter, including participating in a 24-hour robotics marathon that they won in the lower left corner and then visiting some of the smart factories and corporate partners in Kaiser Slaughter, including John Deere's European Technology Center, which is a counterpart to the Moline Innovation Center. And then First Presbyterian, this is our first foray into arts diplomacy. The church choir from First Presbyterian visited Kaiser Slaughter as well and are continuing to develop relationships there. We did get a group of active seniors to Carlo County as well. We had a group of, how many folks went? 17, 18, Sarah?
I think it's 13.
Probably 13 active seniors went to Carlo to continue to develop relationships with their senior community. And then, of course, the Chris Kennelmark, which is something we had been talking about, bringing back to the community. This was initially a partnership between Sister Cities and German American Heritage Center. You'll recall it was held on the Sky Bridge at one point and it was a smaller kind of international festival. And this year, we really got to partner with the Freihhouse Farmers Market. Steve Arons was able to leverage that relationship and work with us on what this could mean to bring the event down to the riverfront, which was hugely successful, great support. And it was a traditional outdoor Chris Kennelmark marketplace. We're still growing the event and learning a lot, but the Freihhouse Farmers Market partnership was huge for that. And you'll recognize, some of you, I think, through these next couple of slides, as partnering with us. Quad City Times, great media, great social media coverage, but a huge turnout, I think, from our community. And I think we all realize we've untapped kind of an unmet demand here for our own version of a Chris Kennelmark. We logged nearly 10,000 visitors to this event over the course of the two days of the event. So extraordinary turnout from the community. Also built some new partnerships. Deer Valley Collector Center came out and did tractor rides for us, Midcoast Fine Arts, kind of organized our arts representation. The Schleswig-Holstein Heritage Society participated with us in many ways, providing musicians, but also their wonderful cuckoo clock. Central High Brass Band, just a huge number of partners came out for this event and you'll see Alderman Gripp and McGinnis there.[928.12][928.12](laughing) We were, I wanted to show this picture, this before picture of Alderman Gripp because here's the after picture of him participating as our Krampus for the event. Krampus is sort of an evil elf kind of figure in German tradition. So (laughing) so there's Krampus at the event. And then we also have our alter ego for Steve Arons and he served as our Saint Nick. So among the many partnerships on the event, we really have to thank the city of Davenport because between all of your participation as volunteers and leaders in the event, but also funding that allowed many of the enhancements, including some of the beautification signage of the event, I really think, you know, it is what made the difference this year and really turned a corner on this event. So we will definitely be back next year for this one. And then we finished our year with the Longfong delegation back in town here in Davenport and that was a wonderful turnout as well. Reconnected with West High and some of those partnerships, had some wonderful connection with city staff, but then also held one of our partner socials and got to connect with the Quad City Chinese Association. And that's a new partner for us. So, you know, as we are doing this work internationally, we're very cognizant of the opportunity to start connecting more and more of these partners as part of that work. So what's coming up? It's been a busy year, but the big news coming up this year is the Kaiser Slaughter anniversary coming up 2019-2020. So we're doing some work there. German American Heritage Center and our partners there have an exhibit up right now, a display on Kaiser Slaughter. Their first official event is a Kaiser Slaughter travelogue on February 17th that we'll get you more information on. And then we are hosting a partnership with Scott Community College and their urban campus. We'll be hosting a citizen diplomacy workshop and we're hosting John DeBeat from Muscatine Sister Cities and their tremendously successful Sister City organization there to look at some of the basic concepts of citizen diplomacy, how to connect your supporters, but then also some of the governance structures. So it's really designed as a workshop for current participants, but also those that are interested in getting more engaged and will serve as a foundation for our strategic planning this spring. You all are probably very aware of the Kaiser Slaughter Square renovation that's coming up. We're thrilled to be partnering with you on that as well and we're supporting the Kaiser Slaughter Square benefit at Duck City Bistro. We hope you'll be able to make that as well. That's a partnership with downtown Davenport Partnership and many of the businesses downtown. Our spring partner social at Me and Billy's on April 4th and then our annual meeting will be back at German American Heritage Center this year as a closing to the Kaiser Slaughter exhibit. Upcoming diplomacy opportunities for you, we do have the youth exchange back in town from Kaiser Slaughter. This is the reciprocal exchange of their students actually coming to Davenport. They'll be participating in STEM activities, visiting our corporate partners and looking at technologies, including STEM in agriculture. They'll participate in the Trebuchet Contest for the Quad City Science and Engineering Council. That will be April 8th through the 24th. The official city delegation will be here, April 10th through 26th. We're still looking at numbers, but are sure that we'll have a handful of the city staff, including their Director of Cultural Affairs there that will be working with us on maintaining and building new partnerships. So we're very pleased to also have some program level people coming with us to keep moving those partnerships forward. We are putting together a Davenport delegation to Carlo County for May-June, likely June of this year, and then are exploring Longfong, China for next fall. We are planning on a large Davenport delegation at some point in 2020 to head into Kaiser Slaughter. That is their end of the 60th anniversary celebration. So while we start our celebration this year, it'll complete its anniversary in Kaiser Slaughter in 2020. So we'll get more information to you as we know more on dates and opportunities. They're in planning process right now on extending the invitation and trying to align that with some of their local events. And a thanks to our partners. From 10 to about 40 partners at this point that we've identified and are connecting to these relationships, including our international partners that are also continuing to grow as we reinvigorate and reconnect with our international partners. So it's been a tremendous year, a lot of support, a lot of folks from throughout the community coming out and showing their interest and support and serving as our citizen diplomats. And our biggest thank you is to you as the city administrators and council and elected officials. Your support has meant everything to this initiative and city staff has been great to work with. Brandon Wright, working with us on our finances and Nevada Limkey and Tiffany Thorne Dyke and now Sam Torres. It's just been a tremendous year of growth for us and we couldn't have done it without your support. We're here to answer any questions or respond to any...
Well, thank you. It's great to see the great development that's happened over the time, the kind of reinvigoration as well as reorganization of the group. So thank you for all your efforts, thank you for the great overview and we look forward to more great things in the future.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Let's give a nice round of applause.
Thank you.[1269.73][1269.73](applause)
And I want to, before you leave, Alderman Mattson, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, I've been here a while and Sister Cities has always been kind of a thing, but since your leadership and you guys being involved, now it's a big thing. And the relationships that you build and just with the community around here in Davenport and the Quad Cities, this thing really brings people together and it does, and now you take it around the world. Again, my applause to you because it's now, it's something to talk about and the relationships you guys build, watching this develop over time, especially in the last few years under your leadership, has been something to talk about. So I just wanted to say my observation.
Thank you. And thank you again, thank you all very much.
Thank you.[1314.88][1314.88](applause)
Are there any petitions, communications from any of our council members? And I'll first turn it over to Alderman McGinnis as chair of our community engagement.
Thank you, your honor. A few things tonight. First, Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow to everybody. And just wanted to let you know the next Washington Street Neighborhood Meeting is Monday, February 18th at 6:00 PM at Tiffany's Treasures, 1134 Washington Street. This is for people living between Locust and 12th Street and Taylor to Sturtevant. We have some very talented kiddos in our, in our community and so congratulations to the Davenport Central Singers Incorporated for attaining grand champion at a recent competition in Mount Pleasant. This is the show choir. The fun continues this weekend when Davenport Central and West High Schools present the Great River Show Choir Invitational at the Adler Theater. Choirs from across several states, junior and senior high. Singing and dancing starts Friday afternoon and continues through the Saturday night at the Adler Theater. If you, for information, you can contact their box office. And then at the Davenport Junior Theater, ESOP's Falables, I think it is, it's a rock musical and it's Saturday and Sunday for the next two weekends and there's two shows a day each Saturday and Sunday. So that's something you might want to check out as well. Also, as we celebrate African American History Month now through the end of February, the Rock Island Arsenal Museum presents, from the American Museum of Iowa, an exhibit called Unconditional Loyalty, The Military Service of African Americans. It is from the African American Museum of Iowa and it tells the stories of African American military heroes and heroines from the Revolutionary War to today, including the history of African American troops in Iowa. Museum is open Tuesday through Saturday, 12 to 4 and the exhibit is free. A reminder again that the Citizens Academy enrollment, the deadline is February 22nd. If you're interested, you can find more information on the city's website. And one last thing for the third ward, the February 3rd ward meeting will be Thursday, the 21st at 6:30 PM at the City Hall Council Chambers. That's a week later than normal, but I didn't want to conflict with the little kid with the bow and arrow, so we didn't want to do that. So it's going to be next Thursday and the special guest is going to be Nick Van Camp and that's Davenport City Assessor. And so he'll be talking about the process of how properties are assessed, which is always of interest to all of us. So you don't have to live in the third ward to join us, it'll be right here in the chamber. So thank you very much, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to say thanks to Ms. Spiegel, Brandon Wright and Linda and the mayor, Ms. Tompkins, my colleague to my right, Mr. Kuhl. We went to Chicago the last two days to talk with Moody's and S&amp;P Global about our bond rating and it was great discussion, wonderful information that was shared from our staff about our financial status and they smiled and talked favorably. I have no idea what they'll do, but it was a great time, great understanding from both perspectives. The mayor leading the information with Ms. Spiegel and Mr. Wright was enlightening and I was proud to be part of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. I wanted to let everyone know about the second ward meeting coming up on February 9th. It will be at 6:00 PM, right across the street in the Davenport Police Department Community Room. Our special guest will be from our community planning and economic development team here. They're going to be talking about development in the West End, all about how companies select their sites. And if you're one of the many people over the years who said, "Well, why isn't there this in the West End?", this is going to be the meeting for you. So hopefully I will see you Tuesday at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, honor. And the great news is the fourth ward is having a meeting next Tuesday at the Fairmont Library. We're going to have Clay from Public Works talking about all the exciting projects for the fourth ward and Rich will be giving a presentation on what it takes to be a good neighbor in our great city. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works staff. I noticed that they were out doing potholes over this past weekend on 53rd Street and obviously lots of other areas. So I just really appreciate their hard work and recognize that they haven't had a break. So I know that we still have potholes, but there's only so much they can do as Mother Nature keeps coming at them. So hang in there and thank you, staff. It's much appreciated.
Again, I want to reach out and thank all our colleagues because you can hear the events they are doing in their wards and the, we've got to also recognize the staff who put in that extra time to be at all of those extra events and the extended work that our Public Works people are doing with the current conditions, but then also going out and trying to fill the potholes when the snow stops. So thank you to all of them for that. I think we're seeing no others. We're going to have, we have one public hearing this evening and let me read that first. FY 2020 Operating Budget, FY 2020 Capital Improvement Budget and the FY 2020 through '25 Capital Improvement Plan. Before I open the public hearing, I'd like to turn it over to our city administrator for a little report, or a big report, a happy report.
It's a pretty one. How's that? All right. Good evening, your honor, members of city council and the public. It is my honor to present this information on the fiscal 2020 proposed budget. We spent the last few Saturdays together working on this, but please know your staff has been working on this since last August, going through all the stages of what it takes to develop a budget here in the city. The highlight says we've talked about through, through the process, this budget maintains the tax levy rate and I'll talk a little bit about that in one of the other slides, but also preserves the policies that we talked about in Chicago this week about your liquidity and your reserves so that our fund balances are in really great shape. It's focused on public safety. Last year in the 19 budget, through a public-private partnership, we were able to add four new police officers, two to our schools, two to our neighborhoods. This budget preserves those positions. And due to the work that Chief Sikorski and his team are doing in recalibrating how they staff for the needs in our community, they're going to continue focusing on making sure we have the right staff doing patrol shifts and so that our community sees that police presence, as well as forming a new gun investigation unit. That's an area of crime that we know we need to focus on. We brought you a capital project for the acquisition of the Nibon machine and now we want to have the right personnel so that we can, we can bring justice to our community much quicker. As we've talked about, we, we streets are struggling right now, but this budget brings you a significant investment in streets and sewers, $34 million, with 141 dedicated, 141 million dedicated over the six-year CIP. So a significant investment into our, our infrastructure. And we had a great year again, so strong growth at over 4%. So it's a really, really great year in the community. The budget overview itself, the operating budget comes in at 144,800,000 about, so it's about a 5% increase. The capital budget, just under $50 million, it is a 21% increase. We talked about several major projects where we were fortunate to have some federal and state grant opportunities, which allowed us to do additional projects, so that's why you see an increase there. And then a small increase in our debt component of the budget at 32 and a half million. So your overall budget is 226,693,479. So just under 8% increase over last year's budget. We, as we have in many years, are making modest fee adjustments. So, the, the average resident will see about $8.25 on their sewer bill. As you're all aware, we have a consent decree that we must work through and we want to make sure we're leveraging our finances gradually so that we can make the improvements in the time we need to make them. Standard with our garbage fee increase, so about $1.50 per quarter to make sure we're continuing to invest in capital and our, our personnel. And then a small modest increase in our clean water fee of about a quarter per quarter. So, what does that mean to the average Davenport resident? You'll see on a property value of about 124,000, it's about $66. We talked in the last slide about the fee increase. You will see there is an increase in property taxes. I want to highlight that we are not changing the city's mill levy. This change is due to a change in the commercial or the residential rollback, which is a formulary given to us by the state. So, it's no action that the council's taken that is making that change. We've talked a lot over the years about making sure our fund balance is in the right place and this was a highlight of our trip with the bond rating agencies. Last year, the council changed its policy from 15 to 20 to 17 to 25%. We came in at the year-end at 23.9%. So, we're in a really, really great position from a rainy day perspective, if you think of it that way. This, every other year, we do a citizen survey. This was our fall that we did it. I don't think any surprises to you or, or us about what our citizens were feeling about the community. Highest priorities need to be streets, neighborhoods, police and economic development. And I think this budget before you really focuses on those four core areas. Places where we need to invest and remember that IS rating, the, the higher the number, the more people will feel the investment and it'll change their opinion. So, again, city streets, neighborhoods and businesses, so all, all areas to focus on. Public safety, always an, an important area for our community. 70% dedicated to police and fire, that remains. We know that's important and we continue to make that investment. Infrastructure, we've talked about, you know, and one of the important things besides streets and sewers in both short-term and long-term funding is that 6.2 million is dedicated to our city assets. We, we have a large footprint of buildings that provide services to our community and making sure we take care of those over the long run, so the investments are small along the way. Little more about the CIP. Major focus again in streets and sewers. Facilities, fleet, again, all tied to our primary businesses that the city conducts. And then I'll just highlight a few of the key CIP projects that we talked about through the CIP process. Urban revitalization, it's a really big project that we continue to chip away at defining programs and policies and opportunities. We proposed an additional increase this year from the 200,000 that was in the 19 budget to half a million in the 20 budget, so that we can continue to make strategic investments in our, in our core neighborhoods. Main Street Landing, we've talked about, it seems like, I've not been here as long as some of you, but we've talked a lot about this space and actually having it under construction and beginning these next phases will continue to transform our downtown and our community, which we're excited about. I think this is Clay's favorite one, the 1930s sewer line. But as part of our consent decree, making sure that we're decommissioning the assets that are no longer relevant to protect the ones that we have. This is one of the biggest projects from a sewer standpoint that we've brought forward to you in recent years. 53rd, this is one of the, the grant applications, so about 80% of this is funded by governments that are not us. So, this is a great leverage of our local money. It will be a little painful for a couple of years, but the outcome will be fantastic. And then one really important area, the high-volume neighborhood streets. So, we know that our, our entire infrastructure needs investment. Public Works has done a fantastic job of essentially grading the assets and making sure that we're putting together the right portfolio of investment to continue to preserve our streets the best we can. A reminder, last year, the council set on a journey of a two-year set of goals. You'll see that this budget continues to align with moving forward the six council goals that we established. We will revisit those again probably at the end of this year, the calendar year. And when we presented the work plan, we, we got to check off lots of things we accomplished in 18. There's still lots of things we're working on from the work plan, but wanted to highlight some of the new for 19 things that we're doing. We'll talk about a parking study downtown to make sure our garages are being utilized, our street parking policies are, are in the right place. Vacant property registration, again, that's one of those critical components to urban revitalization to make sure we're managing our property portfolio the best we can to preserve the neighborhoods. We were fortunate to be recognized for two opportunity zones through that program, through the government. So, we'll be working in partnership on the marketing and ultimately the development of maybe some strategic sites that might go with that portfolio. We want to be very efficient in how our businesses work with us, but make sure that we're getting all the right checks and balances. So, it's time for us to review our business licensing process. Businesses changed a lot. Services are treated different than retailers and we want to just go through and streamline, make sure we're, we're regulating the right things most efficiently. Last year, we did a professional service agreement with Quad City First, which was really the first of its kind and I think has been a great addition. We plan to work with the new CVB Director on developing a similar relationship with our Visit Quad Cities organization. So, we have a common definition of what services we're looking for and what outcomes we're working towards. And then next year, we're talking about the 2020 budget. Next year is the census year. So, we have two years of very different work in each year, but the staff will start its 2020 census prep this year. Long-term facilities, we've talked about maintaining the ones we have. Sometimes strategically, we need to relocate them or reinvest. So, we have a couple of different ones there, specifically the fire training asset relocation and the long-term home of Station 3 to get it out of the floodplain. And then the additional need for storage across some of the departments. Public safety radio system, we have lots of federal regulations and a countywide system that we're partnering across both Illinois and Iowa to implement a new system that'll take us into the future. One of the things we've brought to you over the past several years is policy papers. So, we start to create some institutional knowledge of why things were talked about, what the, what the factors were at the time. So, we've got several specifically in the area of Public Works that we'll bring, be bringing forward to you this year. Oops, I'll go back. I didn't want to, didn't want to forget the last one. We continue to negotiate with Canadian Pacific and hope to eventually bring you our offer and acceptance on that. And yes, it's both bridges. So, both, both Elm Street and the 13th Street pedestrian bridge. But we, we will continue to negotiate. Someday we'll get there. Project Gateway is something we've talked about a lot as we head into 2020. How we communicate is different. We have a lot of different tools. We have a lot of opportunity. So, this is a, a really large platform that really repositions how, how we communicate with our constituencies. I look forward to Alderman McGuinness kind of riding shotgun on this one in her new role, because I think we're going to do some really innovative and great things for our community. So, in closing, kind of the major four points, and I will not repeat them, but I'll leave them up here.
Thank you very much. Could you mention just very quickly, you know, we talked about some of the fee adjustments, the, the programs we have for people that are in need and so forth as well?
Sure, and I don't know the full specifics. Anyone who wants to know more can call our Revenue Counter, but there are some median income requirements that if you fall below certain poverty thresholds, that all of your fees can be waived. So, if you think you might be close or you want to know more information, our Revenue Counter would be happy to provide that to you.
Thank you. So, with that, I will open the public hearing again as for the 2020 Operating Budget, the 2020 Capital Improvement Budget and the Fiscal 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? Please, name please and your address or ward, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Richardson. I'm President of Ecumenical Housing Development Group. Ecumenical Housing Development Group is a small, not-for-profit organization that targets low to moderate income individuals to provide safe, secure, affordable housing in central and west Davenport. And one of the things that I wanted to speak about was that this past year, we have had a temporary circle, um, um, street improvement done at the 6th and Ash Neighborhood. And I'd like to thank Alderman McGuinness and Alderman Grip for their work in getting this accomplished. Also, the Davenport Public Works Department as well. They worked with multiple neighbors and residents within that 6th and Ash area. Ecumenical Housing Development Group owns several properties within that neighborhood and helped transform this neighborhood from a, um, a neighborhood that was depressed and, and had a lot of crime back in the late 90s into a more inviting community. And so, one of the things that happened was a celebration of this circle just before Christmas. We had a Christmas tree lighting that was put into the center of the circle and Alderman Grip attended and we thank him for that. And it was a great celebration and several community neighbors and partners were with us at that time. So, my point of speaking tonight is to make that circle permanent. And I hope that it happens within the 2020 budget and the capital improvement program. And I don't know if it's, if it is or not, because I haven't seen the details. But I would hope that within that $34 million, might be a small portion to make that circle permanent and complete the curbing and complete the landscaping. And it would both be for safety of the neighborhood as well as neighborhood improvement. That would also include crosswalks and painting for those crosswalks.
And you could check with our Planning and Public Works people. They have more specifics on the data.
Right.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the budget plan? Any other? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing will be closed. Then we have a group of individual items on our discussion agenda. The first is the third consideration for ordinance for case number REZ 18-16, request of Rob Davis with Bush Construction to rezone 5.93 acres, more or less of property located north of East 58th Street and east of Utica Ridge Road from CO Office Shop District to R5M Medium Density Residential District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? If you would, please come up, identify yourself and your address or ward, please.
Thank you for listening to me again. I'm Fran Truitt. I live at 5905 Utica Ridge Road in Ward 6. I will not dwell on the lack of communication before zoning. Commission voted the second week to change CO 25-foot to R5M 90-foot. They voted to allow 90-foot buildings in the middle of one-story condos. This is actually what you are, it says on your agenda that you are voting on too. I do realize that CT, the CO has changed to CT. 35-foot and RFM is 70-foot, but 70-foot is still twice what zoning recommended after a two-year study for this area. Mr. Kuhl continues to push R5M even after a neighborhood meeting where 12 residents begged him to leave the property CT. At the sixth ward meeting, 20 of the 25 people spoke out against RFM. Only one person who had been promised a two-and-a-half acre green space behind his house thought it was a good idea. Mr. Kuhl also said that if it's-
Ma'am, I just ask, we're not, we don't address any particular Alderman, so just talk about your general points.
And the reason I say that is because nobody else has said anything except him in favor of it.
He represents all of us in this particular-
Okay, okay. All righty, so I guess, um, so apparently the City Council continues to push RFM even after a neighborhood meeting. You also say that if this is not passed, Bush would build two three-story co-ops with 90 families instead of the 64 that would be in this building they propose. He apparently had not checked with zoning because Mr. Flynn said a three-story building is not feasible in CT. A letter was sent out saying that one of our Aldermen spoke with the developer who does not think Bush will be able to meet the 50% occupancy they need to go forward, yet still pushing RFM. I was given a copy a while ago of this letter that was sent to you by CPED. One of the things they say is zoning is intended to define appropriate uses for a property rather than conditioning it upon a particular developer or completing a particular project within a period of time. To me, it seems like this is what you are advocating. You say that under CT, Bush is free to build retail and business sites with a 350-foot parking spaces and that this could not happen if RFM is approved. What this letter did not say was that under RFM, Bush or whoever they sell the property to could now build a home or daycare center for troubled youths, a drug treatment clinic, domestic violence center, educational or government offices, or a financial institution 30-foot taller than Wells Fargo Building. Even if you vote for the proposed covenants, these could all be built, these buildings could all be built at 53-foot if RFM is passed. The statement is correct that under CT, Bush could build business and retail sites and parking spaces. In fact, when we bought our properties, this is what we thought would probably happen, but at 25-foot maximum. We actually see nothing under CT that would not be acceptable. I sent a page and a half letter to our Alderman, asking him many questions and checking, including the linear dimensions of the building, the size of the lot, setbacks, et cetera. And the response was that Bush is not required to give this information to us until a site plan is developed. So, did Bush present this to zoning with nothing but an L-shaped building in the middle of the lot? He also gave the patented answer that he has done his best to do what is right for everyone. But to most of us, it seems like he is doing what is best for Bush, nor did he answer any of my questions. Bush keeps saying that this is expensive property. They bought it knowing it was CO. Zoning has now changed it to CT and they still want more. I called six people to come to the meeting tonight. Each one said in their own way, "Why bother? City Council will vote for whatever brings the most money." I find that very sad and I don't believe this to be true. I know you do care for the residents. Please think how you would vote if this monstrosity was proposed in your own neighborhood. Please do the right thing and leave this property CT. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Johnson. I live at 4010 East 59th Street in Davenport. Been a resident there and in Davenport for 20 years. Most of my comments certainly fall in line with what you just heard. I'm, I'm in favor of development in, in Davenport. I'm in favor of a development that, that suits the needs of the community as well as the blending in with the surrounding neighborhood. I found it interesting that in Kerry's talk this evening, the four top items on the city of Davenport's focus, one of them is quality of neighborhood. This recommendation is, is being processed right now for the rezoning change to allow properties that, it's a little confusing to me whether it's 70 feet or 90 feet. Doesn't matter which one that is, when you're putting that in the middle of residential properties that are single and two-story properties, it is just going to be overbearing and overwhelming to the surrounding neighborhood. I, as well, when I bought the property, I knew that would be developed, that empty lot wouldn't be a surprise to me. But again, what we had at the time was, I believe it was called CO, which was office commercial. You look at a development like, um, the Gentry Shop, beautiful, blends in well with the neighborhood, one-story tall. Even if you go to 53rd and Utica Ridge, you don't see structures that are towering up to 70 and 90 feet. And that's a commercial corridor. The CT that came out of the comprehensive rezoning plan for the city, I think we can all live with that. That allowed structures to go up to 35 feet. Still slightly larger probably than most of what we're dealing with, but not overbearing. So, my request to you is when you discuss this zoning and, and get to the point of voting on it, I would recommend we stick with what the rezoning plan was. If anything, moving that to CT, if in fact you have to move forward with multifamily, I would ask that there's a restriction on heights that probably stays within that 35-foot maximum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sue Gable and I live at 5907 Utica Ridge Road. And you've seen me a lot here, so I kind of feel like I've probably talked to you more than my own family. But Jean Wolfe, who lives at 5825 Stevens Circle, has asked me to read this for her. And she says, "Vote no to rezone Utica Ridge, REZ 18-16. Thank you for letting me express my opposition to rezone the property north on Utica Ridge. I urge the mayor and city council-" I urge the mayor and city council to vote no to rezone, REZ 1816. The newest city of Davenport zoning ordinance is the result of a two-years, two-years of work. These two portions are especially pertinent. Section D, to protect the character and maintain the stability of the city's residential and non-residential areas. Section E, to preserve and enhance, enhance the value of structures, communities, and neighborhoods that constitute the distinct places within the city. All of the neighbors I have spoken to in Lakehurst and the Villas and north of the property have spoken against this land being rezoned, but they were also involved with the protests against the zoning of the beauty salon next to this land. The homeowners lost their protests, the city rezoned, the developers were awarded with rezoning, and now bulldozers sit on the property ready to build. Homeowners thought their neighborhoods would be protected, maintained, and preserved as sections D and E describe, but that was not true in this case. Clearly, the neighbors in the three surrounding neighborhoods do not believe that character of the residential area would be maintained, nor does this decision enhance their neighborhoods. The additional traffic, water problems, and light pollution will have a negative impact on these homeowners and neighborhoods. The action of the city council has resulted in the opposite of protecting, maintaining, and preserving our neighborhoods. In order for large numbers of homeowners to have their opposition voices heard, they need to attend city council meetings and speak. However, this time of year, people's voices have been reduced. Many other neighbors have traveled to warmer climates and cannot physically stand before you here. Neighbors are caring for sick family members. Many people cannot drive on the ice or when it's dark. Probably most importantly, neighbors just went through this process a few months ago regarding the rezoning of the beauty salon and they lost. The city council does not listen to homeowners," she quotes, is the message I heard over and over again from individuals that surround this property. The language of the two-year study sounds great when you read out loud, but in terms of implementation, homeowners continue to lose out to developers. The language of sections D and E have not been implemented to protect, maintain, and preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods. When the city council consistently votes to rezone in favor of developers, this council does not protect the character and maintain the stability of the city's residential areas. It does not preserve the value of communities and neighborhoods within this city. I urge the city council to vote no to rezone, REZ 1816, and implement with integrity the language that this group has placed in the document that took two years to create. And I would just like to say that I still choose to believe in the integrity of this process. And my hope is that each one of you has driven by this property, which is approximately nine point, or 5.9 acre plot, and imagined, because it's going to take some imagination, a four-story building resting approximately 50 foot from Utica Ridge and 50 foot from our lot line on the north side. Quite a sight, right? Those that have worked so diligently for the past two years on the newly revised zoning plan, homeowners, association groups, plan and zone employees, as well as some city council members should continue to support CT rather than RMF. We respectfully ask that you vote no on the proposed zoning change for this project. I thank you very much for your patience and I am sure that you are all very happy to get this off of your agendas, but it's the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council, please? Yes, your name and address, please?
My name is Lynn Gibson. I'm with Bush Construction. Thank you again for letting me speak tonight. I have a slide, if it's okay if I close that out? This is a picture that you have seen before. Just to touch on a few things quickly tonight. The ground in question, as shown with just a blocking diagram of the building, we would ask you to allow us to build there. The ground is, as we've mentioned, is currently zoned with the new changes, commercial transitional, with a height allowance of up to 70 feet at commercial transitional. The ground around it, the condos to the north and the condos to the east, with the zoning change last month became, went from C0 to residential multifamily. So our rezoning request is to become also RMF. And we believe that residential use of that lot is a better fit than commercial. So what's happening right now, as you see that, that lot exists, there is a berm to the north and a row of hedges. There is a berm and a row of trees to the east. All of those berms would remain and actually get larger and additional landscaping would be there. If you recall, planning and zoning, or excuse me, community development approved our rezoning request and recommended that this move forward. In staff's opinion, building height on its own should not determine land use capability. Allowing greater height on this property may reduce the footprint of any development and increase overall open space. And that's one thing we talked about last month. Placement of one building creates the most green space that we can create. If you notice the orientation of the houses on the east, they're east-west. We are trying to be very respectful of those folks whose living space backs up to our property. So in addition to the berm and the landscaping, green space there as opposed to another building there, we see as a more positive outcome. Now, it's a tall building. It has to be four stories to remain one building and to shrink the footprint. It remains at four stories, we're allowed to do 62 units and our, our market study indicates a need for this kind of housing. And the city encourages development of a variety of housing types to server, to serve its diverse population. So again, less footprint, more units in, in one single building, more green space. The buildings to the north, the condos particularly to the north, have a north-south orientation. You're looking at, to the north with the pointer here, the, their garages and their driveways there. So through this process, we've tried to keep as much green space and we've also tried to work with the neighbors and ended up with some restrictions on our rezoning request that creates, confirms the amount of green space, confirms the density of one building on the site, and also increased the setbacks of the, of the building itself to keep it further from Utica Ridge, respecting the concerns of the Lakehurst neighbors who would pull out on Utica Ridge and be looking at a large structure. Moving it back a bit and then also trying to keep it a little further away from the folks on the east and give them as much green space as possible. The important note, through this change, of course, we've gone to from C0 to RMF5 to CT, that's a little confusing. It does allow for 70 feet. The 90 feet is old information and not accurate. 70 feet, as it relates to our request, is old information and not accurate. Our building all along at four stories is projected to be somewhere in the range of 50 feet. And one of the restrictions that is going to go along, should you approve it with our rezoning request, is that it be no more than 53 feet. So the 70 feet of reasonable concern and, and still a tall building is, the 70 feet will not happen. And that, that has been worked out with Matt Flynn and Alderman Klul and legal council, both the city and our own legal council. So in closing, we wanted to make sure you have the accurate information, remind you that the berm, the buffers, we're creating as much buffer and space between us and our neighbors as possible in our attempt to be a good neighbor. But again, best use of the land, least impact on folks around us, least impact on environment and creation of most green space is one building and, and one four-story building as opposed to two, three stories. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Again, name and address, please, or identification.
Rob Davis with Bush Construction. We've heard a number of concerns cited by the neighbors in opposition, many of which don't seem to have any bearing on the proposed ordinance change. However, I don't want to let them go unanswered. We've been asked what are the details of our expenditures to date on this endeavor. Obviously not relevant to our rezoning request, but we would share that between conceptual design fees, a market study, marketing and advertising prep, legal fees and real estate costs, all of which are not uncommon, nor are they unexpected, but they're not really relevant to the rezoning. We've had, heard different references made to the occupancy rate of our proposed building with a handful of different percentages being thrown out. The reality is that this number is, is only relevant when the, when, when project construction gets underway, not if the project goes. This number is variable and so you've heard a couple of different percentages thrown out there, but it really depends on which lender we choose to utilize and, and how quickly the reservations are made with result, with reference to our property. We've heard questioned as, will there be sidewalks? Well, absolutely there will be sidewalks in addition to the walking path through the property for our members. What are the setbacks? Another question. Well, we've worked with, as you've heard, city planning and development staff. We've agreed to concede to amendments to the zoning, to the existing zoning that exceed the minimums required. I think one other question that's came up early and, and a couple of different times is what are we doing with our stormwater? Short answer is that we simply don't, we haven't proceeded far enough in our design and our site investigation to develop our details. However, this is also not uncommon at this stage of our development. The one thing that we can say with absolute certainty regarding our runoff is it won't have an impact on the neighboring properties and, nor is it allowed. All of these questions and many more will be addressed through the appropriate design review and completed city building codes and ordinances, of course. We have actually heard a couple of neighbors speak in support of the project and, and as mentioned, planning and zoning has recommended the project for approval. I think Lynn outlined a number of, of the reasons that the P&amp;Z had recommended for approval, all great reasons. You know, we've heard attacks on council's integrity, but we certainly appreciate the concern relative to this ward, but we applaud the vision in considering the good of the whole and, and not just a handful of individuals weighing the impact of a new development. With our new development comes the creation of over 100 construction jobs, additional revenues to the tax base, and another choice for a different type of housing, specifically where a need has been identified. All positives for the community. While we understand this is a lengthy and sometimes contentious process, we appreciate the recommendation from P&amp;Z and council's attention and consideration of our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Seeing, good. Moved, it's, and is there any discussion from any of the aldermen? Alderman Klul.
After nine, after nine weeks, it finally comes down to, to this, this evening. I want to thank everybody who's spent time with me on this issue, the Gables who invited me into their home, folks on Deer Valley or Crow Valley Park Drive, private meetings that I've had with people, telephone calls, emails, our community meetings that we've had. There's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of development of ideas. I know that the folks here, you know, that have spoken tonight, I appreciate Fran, Jerry, Sue, and absentia Jean, have been very vocal in their concerns from the very beginning. I, I appreciate that. I, I thought tonight, you know, I've, I've gone through my thinking process, you know, over the last six weeks and I thought I'd present it a little bit differently tonight so that the, you know, so that there's at least some variety in, in how this is looked at. So I, I've prepared three scenarios. Scenario one is that the council approves the RMF as requested by Bush. As has been stated, this would lead to the possibility of building to 70 foot. Now, Bush has indicated that they don't intend to build a 70 foot, that they're, they're talking about a four-story building. However, any succeeding developer to Bush would be enabled to build a 70 foot. And I believe over these weeks that I've heard from council members that they don't believe that this is appropriate at all. I don't, so I see this as a, as a non-starter. The second scenario is that the council approves the RMF with two covenants and the two covenants have been, been, been listed tonight, been talked about, and I'll read those specifically later. But essentially what it amounts to is that we're looking at four stories. It would be limited to four stories. The building would be 40 to 50 feet off of Utica Ridge. The, the requirement would be 25. Bush has, has agreed to the 40 to 50. It would be a single multi-residential footprint and thereby retaining the green space that I think is, at least for me, very important and I think important to the neighborhood as well. So one of the good things about the RMF with the two covenants is that you, you know what's going to be built there. It's going to be a, a four-story luxury co-op unit with underground parking. It's going to be one residential unit. And that applies not only to Bush, should they build, but to any other owner of that property. That restriction will exist with the land. It will require a vote of the, the council to, to rezone that and I just don't, don't see that happening. Scenario three is that the council does not approve the rezoning ordinance, in which case the property will remain CT, zone CT, that is commercial transitional. Now, as, as you've heard from the representatives from Bush, their business model would require them in that regard to, to build two buildings. So there would be two residential structures on the property rather than one. So I think this is the likely alternative. Now, some folks I think have thought of these as threats and I, I want to clarify that these are not threats. This is reality. These are alternatives. These are things that need to be taken in account to make our decision. If they've been perceived as threats, I apologize, they are not. These are alternatives that we need to consider before we make a decision. So if in fact, the two residential structures were created, which is probably the likely alternative if the rezoning request tonight is not approved, the green space would be significantly diminished and impacted. The legacy issues with water would be compounded. The, the traffic would be increased with the increased number of people in that area. And I think an important consideration is the people that live on, on Crow Valley Park Drive. One of the houses that I visited while I was doing this research was with a gentleman from that area and looking out their living room window towards the back, what they would see if this second residential building was built, which would be parallel to Crow Valley Park Drive. It's, it's inconceivable that somebody would be satisfied with living with this structure right out their, their living room window. It's, it would be an incredible impact to these people and I think that's significant. Now, if Bush cannot guarantee 50% occupancy of those buildings, then that presents the other scenario that Brad talked about and that's the commercial development of the entire area with no green space at all. And the entire area in the middle of those businesses paved over with asphalt, 350 parking spots. That to me does not seem transitional in nature. That seems to me to be not what this neighborhood really needs. I, I think that that's an abrupt change to, to the, the commercial into the residential area. So I, I guess the bottom line is that for me, I, I talked to these people after we built that hair salon and we did upzone that area from CO to C1. We did it because we felt that it was part of a, a, a very busy street on Utica Ridge. We felt that it was appropriate out there on that end. But I told folks after that, I said, "I will not agree to upzoning this area surrounding this, this development in the future." And so here we are three months later and I have wrestled with that and especially when I sat down and talked with the Gables, I, I said, "I, I feel uncomfortable with this. I'm uncomfortable with that four-story building, but I don't want to break that promise." And so what I see is that the RMF with the covenants is actually downzoning. This, this will be four stories, no more. That, this, this will be four stories, no more. It will be residential, the same thing as the, the Villas themselves are RMF, same zoning with covenants restricting development. If we do not approve this tonight, the area remains CT, and to me, that is upzoning. So it's with that that, that I would like to offer the following two amendments to the rezoning ordinance per case REZ 18-16. The two amendments are as follows. One, that development of the site be limited to one multifamily structure, not to exceed four stories of dwelling units above ground, and one level of underground parking. The maximum story height shall not exceed 12 feet floor to floor. Number two, that the said structure be located in the southwest portion of the site with no portion being closer than 40 to 50 feet from any property line.
That's a motion. I just wanted to clarify procedurally here. If, so procedurally, are we, at this point in time, I had a couple more people wanting to talk, can we move that motion at this point and vote on that, or how does it proceed? I want to check with you, Brian, just to make sure.
Yes. It would probably be better if other aldermen wanted to talk about the issue that it be, that the motion be reserved until other aldermen have talked. If the, if, if Alderman Clul wants to offer that motion and have that considered, and somebody wants to second it now, then that's what the council's restricted to talking about.
Okay, so we're in a situation here where we can get a second and move, move forward and talk about that and vote on that, or we can, in fact, without a second, everybody can answer and we can reserve that for later?
Right. It's up to Alderman Clul as to whether he wants to hold his mo, withdraw his motion and, and hold it till other people have had a chance to speak on it.
I would like to hold that motion, continue that motion. It seems more ordered to me to proceed with this motion and then discussion to follow.
Can I ask a point order?
Yes, please.
So you're asking for two amendments? We should vote, if, we should have vote on one amendment at a time. If you're asking for one amendment and these two conditions, that's different, but you don't vote on two amendments at the same time, is that?
Well, it depends on how he wants to make the amendment, and it depends on how the council wants to. If you would prefer two amendments, you should make them in two amendments, because if there's council that want to vote for one but not the other, that's, that's the prerogative.
So to clarify for Alderman Clul, is that one amendment with two conditions, or is it two separate amendments?
I would like to make the two amendments together as a pair.
So it's one amendment with two conditions?
Could say that.
Okay. So based on that, if we have a second, we would talk about that and deal with it now. In the absence of that, correct me now, go.
My understanding is he's, he's held his motion in abeyance for council to discuss the, the, the agenda item as it's on the agenda.
Is that correct, Alderman?
Yes. Should I repeat these two amendments for clarification? Would that be helpful?
Well, we're going to hold them now, at what I'm hearing. We're going to hold them, so you will, is that correct? And then we're going, everybody's going to chance to talk and then revisit it? Is that where we're at here? You haven't made the motion officially.
I, I make this a motion officially. It's my desire to go ahead and present this as an amended motion to REZ 18-16.
Okay. Is that, that's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Now, does anyone want to speak on that amended motion? So let me, there's a bunch of numbers up here, so let me check here. I think our next one is Alderman McGinnis numerically.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will, cannot support this. I will be voting in support, and I want to thank the homeowners who've come out, and also the, the Bush, the people from Bush who've come out to discuss this. I, I feel like that we need to honor what we've done with zoning and the rezoning of the area, and so I'll continue to support the homeowner investors in this particular vote. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Mattson. I'm sorry, Alderman Ambrose. Order first, I'm sorry. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, Rich, you've done a great job, and the people should be very fortunate they got an alderman like you. You know, there's two sides to every issue. We got a great neighborhood, and we also got a great developer that's got a 50-year history of doing great projects and being an incredible neighbor. You know, back in my ward, always asked for people to be good neighbors, and, you know, I think there's too many fares on this project, you know, just, Rich has gone out of his way to work with the developer, and I think it's going to turn out to be an incredible project, and it's going to enhance the neighborhood, you know. So, Rich, I support your amendment, and, you know, I think it's going to be great, and I support the project.
Thank you. I mean, back in order, Alderman Mattson, and then I'll go to Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Or, every time you switch your button, your number changes, so. So to clarify, if I may dialogue with you, Mr. Clul, on this, to clarify, your conditions are to keep this no more than 53 feet, yes?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Because I, I understand, Bush is a great company in Davenport. The neighbors, thank you for your points, and with the compromise here, the concern seems to be the height. And then from my perspective, the green space. So Bush has said, "We want to preserve green space," and we understand the concern with the height. So even though this could take it to an exceedingly, which I agree, an exceedingly high building, which is not appropriate for here, but they have agreed to remedy that by taking it down and keeping it 53, correct? Correct. Okay, so your, your conditions are to keep that height under control at 53 feet. I support that then. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming down and having this discussion, especially in this extreme winter. So thank you, the neighbors. Thank you, Bush Construction. Thank you certainly, Alderman Clul. This has been quite the conversation for quite a while, and I know you've been hit with several big projects in your area since you've joined us, so thank you for your leadership. I've been pretty quiet on this one, just listening. I have driven by this area, so I am familiar with it. Just wanted to share my thoughts, and that is, I do, I am going to vote for this tonight, and that I do think, in looking at this, it is residential. I think that is a good fit. I'm also pleased that we're going to have one building instead of two. I think that would, I think people will appreciate the green space. I think they're doing a good job of having the, the barriers there. And last, I've heard concerns in regards to traffic, and so this is going to be the least amount of traffic, I believe, in having this, this facility there. So I appreciate it. This is certainly one of those situations where it's not a win-win for everybody, but we hope that everybody will appreciate it down the road. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And Alderman Tompkins, Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to recognize that the neighbors do experience this in a very different scenario than, than council does. This is video with rezonings more weeks than not, whereas this came to your attention, and then it's been about a nine or 10-week kind of sprint to this point now. And so I, I did want to acknowledge that this has been probably a more jarring experience than you were fully prepared for. At the same time, you know, this is something, at least I know I wrestle with, and I think everybody else on this, this dais wrestles with. We do think about what would this be like if this was, if this was our neighbor, if this is something that we had to live with for the rest of the time in our property. And it's, it's never an easy decision, because there are always concerns, and there are always people who say, "Oh, well, I, I like this option better, or I like that option better." And it's, there's no, as, as was just mentioned, there's no perfect solution. I'm still deciding, I guess, which I guess I have to do soon, but the, I did want to also mention the stormwater regulations, that we tightened those up recently, so we will not be exasperating any legacy stormwater issues. That is something that is, was a very big priority, that we were not going to allow any development to create more problems downstream. So I did want to make a point on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? I guess I would like, if you would be able, just, do you have it available to reread that, Rich?
Sure. The two amendments are as follows.
Let's qualify. One amendment with two conditions.
One amendment with two conditions.
Great, thank you.
Number one, that development on the site be limited to one multifamily structure, not to exceed four stories of dwelling units above grade, and one level of underground parking. The maximum story height shall not exceed 12 feet floor to floor. Number two, that said structure be located in the southwest portion of the site with no portion being closer than 40 to 50 feet from any property line.
Thank you. We've all heard the motion. Is there, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Is a roll call, please.
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Clul?
Yes.
Nine yeses, one no, Your Honor.
Okay. Now we have a, we still have a motion for the original amendment. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any, any discussion on the original motion? On the motion, original consideration? As amended? Yes, as amended. Okay, seeing none? Roll call, please, on the third consideration as we discussed with the amendment approved.
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Nope.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Again, nine yeses, one no, Your Honor.
The ordinance has been adopted. Again, I want to thank everyone for all their involvement. This took a lot of discussion on everybody's part, and a lot of insight and tough decisions, so thank you for all that, as well as the neighbors. Now we have for, I'd like a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda. It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening? Seeing none? We're now going to move to, if there's any public with business, again, please come to podium, identify yourself and your address. And again, as we've talked before, this is a listening session for us. We take any information and then be, consider that for future discussion.
Okay. Donald Stevens Jr., if I was living in Davenport, I could tell you the next part by heart. My ward, I haven't got a clue which ward I'm in, because I'm in Bettendorf. Like I said, I lived over here, I didn't know. Lived there for a year and two months, don't know my ward. That's sad, ain't it? Anyways, I used to live in an address of 3528 North Main Street, number two, 3535 North Main Street, D7, and also D3. These are all properties that used to be called Slagle Apartments, then went from Slagle to being called Yorktown Apartments, and they went from being owned by Slagle Apartments to, through a bank, JP Rentals LLC. The sad reality is that a lot of the units in there either have no water, or they have no heat, or they have a combination of neither. JP Rentals allowed their rental license to lapse, which was up in September of last year, and have also filed bankruptcy in the month of November, and was somehow given the right, with special circumstances, to continue to collect rents off of their tenants at these units out there. One person I happen to know lives in the 3505 building, has been without water for 14 days because his pipes burst. The buildings have been marked with notices that the buildings must be completely emptied and vacated of any tenants by March the 8th of this year. It's kind of sad when you get landlords that are this type of a landlord that has little to no care about their tenants. I've made several attempts to contact JP Rentals. First contact I, I made, I spoke with a lady named Brittany. She sent me, by way of phone message, to her maintenance guy who said that they were no longer in charge of the buildings. However, they're still collecting rents off of people at the building, so therefore they didn't feel the need to go handle any maintenance issues. So here it is. People are still paying rent to JP Rentals, and now they have until March the 8th, which is not even 20 days away, really, and they have to get out. I've lived with situations in my life in the city of Davenport as a renter where we've dealt with, whether I'm with my first wife, or my second wife, or whatever have you. I've been married three times, I'll be honest. I'm in my third and final marriage. Glad I got the one I got. Third time was a charm. But I've dealt with some pretty messed up people that have been landlords. Sad reality is that city has had people that would go and inspect these properties, and anybody with any good conscience would look at these properties, some of which would have condemned them. But no, they've, they've overlooked it and allowed these landlords to continue to rent these properties. Some landlords would buy properties that were completely condemned, do just enough, barely just to get these things to where they can get the approval enough to where they can rent these properties, caring nothing about the people that rent these properties, except for the mighty dollars that they can get out of them. I think that we need to change the process. I'm asking that the council look at changing the process of, you know, who goes and does the rental inspections, and raise the bar on what is acceptable versus what is not. Because when you could sit there and see daylight out of a corner in a wall, and you have windows that won't even close right in, in an apartment, you have apartments where there's heat sometimes, sometimes not heat, sometimes you got water that'll work right, sometimes you don't. Sometimes the air will work right in the summer, sometimes it won't, and the landlords don't do what they're supposed to, to correct these issues. I, I think something needs to be done to make it where it's not as favorable to the landlord, but protect the tenants that are residing in these. And I, I really, I, I wouldn't be coming up here to speak with you on this. I mean, as a Bettendorf resident, other than the fact that I, I know somebody that's being unfortunately affected by this, and, I mean, that's unhealthy, unsanitary.
Thank you for sharing.
So I just wanted to make that aware to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Again, name and ward or address, and, thank you.
Brian Winger, Second Ward, 2709 West 67th Street. First, I want to start by saying that for a city that welcomes diversity, you don't do very well protecting those diverse people. As long as this city is complicit with racism, you are not going to get rid of me.
Out of order.
I'm sorry?
Out of order.
I'm here today to call for councilperson Dickman to resign her position on the city.
Okay, one thing, we're not going to do a specific.
Council, or for the city.
Point of order.
Proceeding to remove her from that.
Excuse me, sir?
You have a, just so you understand, sir.
I want you, as city officials, to hold her accountable for her words and show future, future city coun. Those actions will not be tolerated for the better of our city. My reason for asking this is because of disparaging words she has said concerning the black community.
Again, I would just reference, Mr. Hire, you are, as our attorney, would you please address, how do we handle an issue not about the speaker, but about the topic that he has in mind? So please help us with, maybe this will help your information a little bit.
That has nothing to do, and this, this body has no authority to do what you're talking about.
So, so the city council can't call for another city councilperson to.
So you should familiarize yourself with that process under the state code and pursue that if that's your interest. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak tonight? Seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So thank you.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Meaning adjourned. I know, well, I have already talked to the police about that, too. That would have just been crazy. I didn't really, just shut them off in the microphone.